City Council, please come to order. The clerk will call the row.
Counselor's Kadim.
Here.
Dion.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
Ponte. Raposo.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
And President Kamara.
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam clerk?
Mr. President, can I make a motion to take 24A out of order, please?
Motion to take 24A out of order has been made.
Second.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion, is there a motion on item 24?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselor, do you want to come up and present the citations?
So, this evening, we're presenting a city council citation to the Veterans Association of Bristol County. If we could have Ken and his team, whoever wants to come down and join us, please? So, it's important to highlight the work that many of our veterans organizations do across the city of Fall River, and here's one particularly to represent tonight. I've had the pleasure of spending some time with Ken over the time I've been on the city council to see the work that they're doing, and I've been down to Pine Street many a times to see what's going on, and I've been very impressed with the work that all of you do, and seeing the amount of people that come in and out of the building and the support that you provide to them. And even most recently, we'd worked together to help another veteran out, which was a great experience. It's just nice to see when a team comes together and does some great work. And I look forward to your continued work that you do for all of our veterans in the community. I think it's a good educational lesson. A side note, recently, my kids at the school, we did a collection as a school to benefit the VABC and more, the veterans that attend there. And the kids were just amazed that, A, what was donated, and B, how far these items would go. We're talking about, you know, simple things I think we take for granted, socks, toothpaste, deodorant, shampoo, among other things, and the bounty was just so plentiful, and they were so appreciative of the work they did, and both Kim and Ken came down to pick up the items, and they were just, they took the opportunity to talk to them about how far their impact would go. So, I think this is a small little token of appreciation of them, of all of us, and the community of what you do. So, with that said, an official city council resolution, be it resolved, the city council hereby extends its commendation to the Veterans Association of Bristol County, in recognition of its remarkable support that is provided in the greater Fall River area for both veterans and their family members. Be it further resolved, the Fall River City Council extend best wishes for continued success, and the resolution be entered in the records of the city council adopted May 14, 2024, proposed by myself and signed by President Joseph Kamara. Congratulations, all of you. Thank you very much for your work.
Joe. I have to say, Ken, I went by today. I went by today. I went by St. Anne's Hospital, seen Manny Cavalo, who's in the hospital, and on my way home, I drove by Pine Street. And the number of people that I saw coming out with baskets and carts full of food was very impressive at how many people were being serviced, so thank you for that.
You want to say a few words? Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Yeah, this validates what we do each day, not the reason why we do it, though. So, I thank everybody. We love what we do, and I think it shows. We go in each day with a great attitude, an amazing team, Holly, Kim, Steve, on top of a small army of volunteers that help out each day. So, without you guys, without everybody, it wouldn't happen. And we're just very grateful for all of you and all of the support that we get. So, thank you.
Madam clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for confirmation of the appointment of Nicholas Sicilio to the Board of Park Commissioners.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, question?
An emotion to confirm, Counselor, seat seven, Counselor Raposo.
Just curious, who is this individual replacing on the Board of Park Commissioners?
The chair.
The chair resigned.
Chair resigned, effective when?
About two months ago.
Counselor, will you let the clerk answer, please?
A month.
Please answer, he can speak.
Probably three or four weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming there'll be a new chair appointed at some point?
They have appointed a new chair.
They have appointed, and who might that be? Is that officially it?
Counselor, seats five, nine, 10, 11.
They, McDonald is now the new chair.
That's it, Bernard McDonald.
Bernie McDonald.
Bernie McDonald, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam clerk?
Item two is the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yes.
I don't think we take the vote. Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. We had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is request for the confirmation of the reappointment of Natercia Pereira to the Council on Aging.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment of Victor Farias to the Board of Park Commissioners.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is the mayor's request for confirmation of the reappointment of Bernard McDonald to the Board of Park Commissioners.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is a request from the mayor to rescind the Bristol County ARPA proposal regarding public service and safety equipment, which was adopted on January 9.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion to rescind has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is a communication from the mayor and a proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $700,000 to purchase equipment to increase public service, safety programs, and capacity. This is the Lafayette Skate Park Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. An emotion, Counselor, seat two?
So, I know what I'm going to say isn't going to be popular, however, this is not something that I can support. We have three skate parks, three or four skate parks, all in need of repair, rehab, whatever case may be. I know the ARPA, she is here. Can we waive the rules to have?
It's up to you, Counselor.
The ARPA director come down, please?
You have to make a motion first.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
To waive the rules.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Come on down, please.
Good evening, Karen.
Good evening. So, ARPA contract 13 was $44,135. That number was increased to $61,655 to look at Abbott Court, North Park, and Lafayette.
Correct.
This is basically saying that we can't afford to do all three. What did those numbers come in at, and does this mean that Abbott Court and North Park, those skate park parks, will no longer be in use?
So, the number, the exact number, I do not recall, and I'm not sure that I have that in front of me right now, and so I apologize. I'm just double checking. It was, North Park was, because of the square footage, to redo that area was an astronomical amount of money. We tried to steer away and try some other equipment that you could do, more like that metal framing and stuff, and it just wasn't the same kind of quality. So, we felt like Lafayette, we're still hoping to do something at the other parks, not necessarily skate parks, but redo them in a way that's usable for the residents of the Fall River. But Lafayette, we thought, was more centrally located. As far as ARPA, it fit into the zones, the environmental justice neighborhoods, adjacent to the Flint, centrally located in a census tract that allowed us to, it was 7,000 square feet, so to do a really, we felt like instead of doing kind of like half the job at three, to do a nicer one at one. And we felt like the demand to do three different ones maybe wasn't the best use of our ARPA funds at this time. Just that one, doing a one better one centrally located just seemed better for everyone.
So, my comments would be, number one, I don't, I don't, I get the census tract, but I don't consider Lafayette Park to be centrally located. I consider it to be in the easterly portion of the city, number one. So, part of the logic was, you know, we have obviously low-income people, children, who, this is going to give them accessibility because of where they live, but now we have also low-income, the north end of the city, the south end of the city, who are not going to have access to that park, because Abbott Court is in the western portion of the city, well, the western, southwest. And I don't know that skate parks are utilized the way they used to be. So, I think my biggest concern is, we're talking $700,000, very significant number. We have probably eight to 10 basketball courts that need to be rehabbed. We have tennis courts that need to be rehabbed. People are always saying Fall River is not any good at maintaining what they own. Well, having eight to 10 basketball courts that need to be maintained, that have cracks in them, that might have the hoops ripped down, et cetera, et cetera. For my part, those parks, those basketball courts, tennis courts, are all over the city, which gives everybody access to it, children, adults. Doesn't, your income, your income level doesn't matter. The basketball courts, we have refurbished, have people at them all the time. I drive by Kennedy Park on a regular basis. The tennis courts, the pickle courts, the basketball courts constantly have people. You go up President Avenue, the park there, the basketball courts always being utilized. I just feel we can get a bigger bang for our buck, that we should be taking care of what we own, because obviously, we haven't taken care of these skate parks properly, or we wouldn't be where we are. So, I feel like we're gonna, we're gonna kick two to the curb, invest this significant amount of money to not maintain this either, and down the road, there's going to be an issue. Go ahead.
Can I just respond to a couple?
Absolutely.
So, you hit a couple of things. First of all, I'm a big basketball fan, so I run a big league in my town, so I totally understand that. I think, though, when you're looking at an entire city, you're also trying to look at different interests, right? So, you're trying to, we have done the basketball park, the basketball courts at Britland. We're talking still about redoing some of the other ones, but you, you've kind of like, that's one niche of kids and adults that are using that. And then there's a whole nother group of people who enjoy skateboarding. And so, the condition of those three parks, and I did go there with Mike Dion and the mayor to check them all out, they're, I mean, they're actually dangerous, the way some of them are cracking, and so we've really got to come up with some ideas, and we actually discussed it today, of what we can do up there with North Park. Abbott's pretty small. It's not actually a great location if, for skateboarders who want to real, like, it's just, it's not the square footage that really is ideal. And so, all of them really do need some help, just because I think a lot of them are just dangerous, as is. But, so I think the idea is that when you put money into something, we are going to maintain it. I think these are just very old. And I think that something, we have to try to, like, we've got the volleyball courts, we've done some splash pads, we've done basketball courts, pickleball, you know, all these different things, but I think we have to, like, and basketball too, but I think you have to kind of look at, there's different, like, kids, adults, there's different interests, and by addressing and making sure that at least there's one spot in the city for skateboarders. So, that would be my response. I think, I think I understand your position, but I do think we're trying to make sure we're not just focusing on one set of group of kids and their interests, but trying to sort of distribute across the city different ways that people can partake in outdoor recreational activities.
Well, and I also think that my comments are directed more at the fact that we have basketball courts, we have tennis courts that need to be rehabbed. We have not taken care of them.
And that was the second part. Sorry. Thank you for bringing that up. So, the good news is is that we are, I've been spending the past three weeks kind of going back through our city and Bristol County funds to try to see where we may have some surpluses or, and close out some of the projects that are completed, and bring those balances back into sort of the area where we can disperse them. And so, that's one thing we were talking about today, is what can we, what's left to do, like, what are some priority projects? And those were actually some things that I talked about, you know, doing a splash pad at Kennedy, because we had talked about that originally, fixing up some of the courts. There's another, the court at Lafayette behind the skateboard park. What can we do with North Park? So, I think, you know, if you have some ideas, we would definitely be interested in entertaining those, because we're trying to figure out, you know, what can we do with those spaces as well?
And then my other questions would be, have there been discussions with the park board? Have there been discussions with the park division? Do they have the, so how, how is this going to be maintained moving, moving forward? Is it going to be in the budget? Are we going to budget just to maintain this skateboard, the state-of-the-art skateboard park? Because the park department certainly does not have the proper amount of funding to maintain what we have already. That's proven. That's a fact. We can't, there's no disputing that. So, I don't know if there's been discussions with any of them, if they have the capacity to take care of it the way it should be taken care of, and then, so I don't know if you want to address that first, because I got one more thing to throw out.
I would just say, I'm not, I'm not part of budget meetings, or, you know.
I'll address it. Counselor, it's up to us to maintain it and fund the maintenance of it, not someone in their position.
No, I understand that, but she made a statement saying it is going to be maintained, so that leads me to, how's it going to be maintained?
Right. So, I would, I would think that she's statement was, it's up to us to maintain it, as we have, it's up to us to maintain everything else, and we should provide the funding to maintaining it, not a department head.
Yes, we should, but we don't.
Shame on us.
Basketball courts, tennis courts, the list goes on and on. The armory, we have a long list of bad choices. And then, the last thing is Chapter 54, 132, Parks, Article 4, Parks and Trees, Notice of Proposed Changes in Parks. At least 14 days prior to any vote by the Board of Park Commissioners authorizing a major change to a public park, the Board shall hold the public hearing at which the proposed change shall be presented to the public, and members of the public shall be given an opportunity to comment on the proposal. That's A. B, notice of the public hearing required by subsection A shall be given in the same manner and to the same parties and interests as required for notices of public hearings under the Zoning Act, MGLC 40A, as amended from time to time. C, for the purposes of this article, the term "major change" for public park shall mean any change involving an expenditure of more than $10,000, whether such expenditure is made by the city or by others. So, my last question is, have we met all of these requirements? Have we had these conversations?
So, all I know is, I mean, I, I would argue as an attorney that that is, it's not a major change, because it's an existing, it's, I mean, I understand your, the definition there, but that it's an existing.
Well, this is an ordinance.
Right. But I'm just saying, it is an existing skate park that we're enhancing. So, but I would say that in Green Line Skate Park sent us on May 2, their proposal, and in that proposal, they do the public meetings as part of that. So, there's several public meetings as part of their different, sort of like, as they move through the project, as their, like, their site visit, then they do a public meeting number one, and they do another public meeting as well. So, I don't know if that, you know, this is a little out of my purview. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I understand. The ARPA, I understand all of that.
Yeah. But I do know that in their proposal, there are public meetings built into that.
So, those are my comments, and I just, and believe me, not that I don't want to see a state-of-the-art skateboard park, don't get me wrong, not that I don't think it's a great idea. I just, I just feel that we can do more with our money for more people, and have things that are easier to maintain and should be maintained. And so, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat seven, Counselor Raposo.
So, as somebody who spends a lot of time in the Flint, I can rationalize why this is something that would be done. My concern is, I think, you know, and this is from just my own youthful experience, spending a lot of time at Lafayette Park as a kid. I think Lafayette Park has, not has much traffic as it probably should have over the number of years, for a variety of reasons. The baseball league that was there is no longer. It's, you have a nice, beautiful baseball field that's underutilized. I remember growing up, the skate park that is currently there being used and kind of being beaten up over the years. So, I approach this in a sense of, you know, the proposals, design and construction. Can you answer a few questions for me in regards to, what is the cost of the design?
And sorry, I got this after the, preliminary design looks like it's $8,000. That's an approximate, $8,055.
And the rest is the construction? I would assume.
So, it looks like.
Equipment and construction.
Yeah. So, like, it looks like there's a, sorry, and I misspoke. So, the total, so there's a preliminary design, which includes like, project startup, site visit, first open house, geotechnical survey, existing conditions survey, preliminary design development, final conceptual design, sorry, that is all $52,765. And then the construction, everything after that is the 613, 420.
Assume that the, I, the design that is put together sticks to it, that's what the price tag would essentially be?
Correct.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was maybe a year ago, was when the mayor did some sort of neighborhood, like, walk-through and talk to youth and residents about this particular skate park?
It was prior to me being here, but I believe, yes.
Okay. Because I recall reading a lot about some, some feedback about that skate park particularly. As far as, I don't know if you don't have a design yet, this is going to be the process to design it. I'm wondering if, because I think about Travassos that I see every day, and how it's kind of enclosed and encompassed, and obviously, it's a dead-end street where it is. What is the idea of keeping this skate, to the Counselor Dion's point, keeping this skate park enclosed, taken care of, lit, is one of the things I think about, because, you know, I'm sure a lot of kids will be there during the day, but is there going to be lighting that's to be made available to be used at night? Because I think a lot of, a lot of the different parks, like the basketball courts and tennis courts, have lights. Is this skate park going to have that ability to have lights? Is that an idea, part of the design?
And so, I, I can't answer that only, but I think that that is probably from the synopsis that they say on the public meeting number one. It's public input on, I think, those very things, like, should this be enclosed? Should there be lighting? You know, what sort of, like, I think a lot of the skateboard community will come out. I know the mayor has been in touch with a couple of those lead skate park individuals in the city, Mike Dion has as well, about their interests, what they, you know, they're sort of more of the experts in this.
Yeah, of course.
You know, seeing what they need, what they think needs to be fulfilled.
Okay. And then, as far as, I don't know the actual size of it, but what is currently there? Is that 700 square feet?
So, I, you know what, I didn't measure it when I was there, and I don't know if it's going to, I think it's going to get a little bit bigger from what I, from looking at it. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, though.
Okay. Because I'm thinking that it's going to be bigger than what's currently there.
I think so. I think that was part of, like, the idea of not, like, I remember, I don't remember the total amount, but I just remember it was a million, there was like a couple million dollars, I believe, to do three different parks. And so, this seemed like a much more financially sound investment to do one.
Yeah.
I would also, I know it wasn't specifically you that said this, but you did mention, like, keeping, like, these things, you know, the basketball courts and maintaining and stuff. But I think it's like, that's part of what this ARPA funds. This is one-time money, and the reason we haven't been able to do that over the years, right, is maybe we haven't prioritized it, but we also haven't had the funding to do that.
Correct.
And so, this is the very purpose of the ARPA funds, right, is to fix these things that over time, year after year, we just can't get into the budget. And so, to me, I'm like, I think all of your points are very valid, but that's what this money is for, is to do those, to do those things. And we can do them now.
I'm not, I'm not against it. I think, I think it's a good idea, considering the park that we're talking about. My biggest concern is obviously in this, in what you mentioned, the design phase and having the public input, because I don't think any of us sitting here have a clue what skateboarders go through and what is needed to be a successful skateboarder. Maybe Tony Hawk does, I don't know. So.
I like your light point, too.
Yeah, but the, but, but I think about, you know, a lot of the parks have lights, and, you know, even if we get down to the point where that skate park, if it's state-of-the-art, is permitted, you need lights to do anything there. And it's a perfect area where there's a lot of open space to do an event, if there's a skateboarding event, whatever it may be, that, that would be enhanced. If it's just going to be state-of-the-art during the day, it's going to be complicated. So, my, my only ask is, as the design is going forward, could lights be considered? Because it could be, A, good for everybody, B, it could be permitted out for any sort of league or event, what have you. I think it's a win-win all the way around. But my other concern is just the security of the area. I know I have, I've spoken to administration about the graffiti I know I have, I've spoken to administration about the graffiti that's been going on at Lafayette Park. It's been cleaned, it comes back, it cleaned, it comes back. The fence around the outfield of Lafayette Park is still a mess, and it's been a mess since I was a teenager. So with all that said, you know, do we consider cameras? Do we consider any sort of security to make sure that what we invest is watched and taken care of to avoid, back to your point, we do something nice, it falls apart, and then ten years down the road, doing this again?
We do have those nice graffiti removal mechanisms.
Yes, they're great. Aren't they great?
So a perfect opportunity.
Yes, they are great, but I, again, I'm going to see a reality where this skate park is going to be taxed, for sure. So my, my only thing is, to make sure that it stays the way, as beautiful as it can be. So, my only request through you would be.
Yeah, well, I don't have a pen, but I.
Yeah, lights, security, maybe cameras to make sure that we can keep it for the community. And then obviously, just that public input is hugely important for that. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat one?
Thank you, so, I guess I share the same concerns as Counsel Dion. So, I'm fully supportive of the 700,000 going to parks and, but my only, I guess my only question and concern when I think of skate parks, and she had mentioned it, is just the use of skate parks. Everyone I drive by is just, doesn't seem like it's being utilized. So, you kind of touched a little bit about this in terms of the demands. Can you speak a little bit more of that, in terms of the demands on, for a skate park? In terms of need versus other, and I know we've got the basketball courts, I know we've got the pickleball court, we've got the tennis courts, but how did we come up with, and I think somebody mentioned the mayor, you know, doing a walkthrough? So was that part of what he heard in terms of?
I'm, I don't, I'm not sure, this was, I don't know if I should defer to set on this.
Can, can the city administrator allude on any of this?
We are in a city council meeting, the only way you can come down is if someone makes a motion to waive the rules and have him come down. That's your wish.
Can you allude to this?
If that's, if that's.
Okay, never mind, he can't allude to this. Thank you. So.
I, I will say this, Counselors, and I've heard a couple of things, that the parks are being underutilized, skate parks. I was one of the Counselors that was here, I believe Counsel Prer, maybe Counsel Kill was here, when we first brought skate parks to North Park, and we hadn't had a skate park in the city period. Skate parks, the lifespan of skate parks is less than other parks because they take abuse from skateboards and everything that goes on there. It's concrete, it deteriorates, the skateboards damage them. If they're not safe, no one's going to use them. Extremely underutilized. I will not take a skateboard to a skate park that's got cracks, or I'm going to fall, I can't go down a ramp because I'm going to get hurt. So that's why they're underutilized. If we fix them, trust me when I tell you, they're going to come from all over. Because the first time we put a skateboard in Park, in North Park, people came from everywhere and they were utilizing them all the time. So if we can have a nice skate park, it will be utilized. There are a lot of kids that buy skateboards and use them.
I guess I don't disagree, but I, but I think, like, when you, when you look at skateboarding, there was, there's a trend, right? There's a trend with all sports. I mean, we, we saw it with baseball, baseball kind of died out, it's starting to come back now with soccer, and then it's basketball. So I, you know, there's a cyclical part to any type of activity that we put out there. I, I'm just saying, right now, we've got 700,000, to your point, one-time money, we're not going to see this again. What I'm seeing, and it's not just in the city of Fall River, I mean, I, I was just telling Counsel Dion, I dropped my daughter off for basketball practice in New Bedford, I got a drive-by, a huge soccer field that has a skate park attached to it. And there are hundreds of people that are in this park. There are zero people in the skate park, and it's a brand-new skate park. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is if we're going to leverage this money, I just want to know what the demand is, and make sure that we've actually looked at the demand. And if, if we've got something saying that, maybe it's not the same demand that would be for pickleball courts, and we've already got that, and it's a little bit less, but okay, there's a demand there, then I would say, okay, let's move forward with the skate park. If not, if it's, you know, outdoor exercise units, I'd rather see something like that. And it doesn't need to be the basketball courts, it doesn't need to be the pickleball courts, but I do agree with you, we have to have some diversity in terms of recreational activities that we have. Maybe a field for ultimate frisbee, like, I, I don't know what it is. We talk about playing facilities, surfaces for football, flag football. I mean, there's a, there's a host of things that, that run through my mind. But I'm, I'm just curious in terms of just the demand itself specifically for, you know, the skate park. And I, and I get, get the concept, if you build it, they will come. You know, I just don't want it to be, okay, we spent 700,000, it's there, we've got some demand for about a month, and then nobody's utilizing it, right?
And I just can't, I don't, I could find out. I just, I don't know, I think these conversations all happened prior to my arrival.
Okay, I can, I can appreciate that, and I know it was one of the Counselors that had mentioned the, I guess, the walkthrough of the neighborhoods, whether it was during the election, or just a neighborhood meet and greet with the, with the mayor in terms of, you know, potentially that coming out of that, that neighborhood. Then, if there is some documentation to suggest that that's where that came from, then I'm okay with that, and I'll support it if it's coming from the neighborhood, and that's what they want to, want to see. But I just haven't seen anything in terms of why, you know, why the skate parks, other than that they're already there and might need to be improved. But whether or not the demand is there for it, I just don't know. But, I'm just on the fence for, for that purpose, so.
Can certainly find out first thing tomorrow morning.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat two?
Is Stark Architects, are they, the still, are the ones that are involved in the design project?
So they did the initial ones, and, and my understanding is because the price and what, so, they need to almost outsource to someone who's an expert in this, which, and so this came about because we couldn't afford to do all three of them. And so, we had researched and found another, I think it was Mike Dion, had researched and found another company that specializes in this, that could do the whole thing from like, ground, you know, from the beginning to the end, for a more, for a better price.
So the original 61,665 that was approved for the architectural services, were all of those funds expended?
Let me just. Those were.
They were?
They were expended, the 61,655, that was completed. And I, we, so we do have those designs for Abbott North and Lafayette. But I, I think with this grid line, it was using a different kind of equip, I think it was too, and I, it was too expensive to do what they wanted to do. And so that's why they went for, to another alternative that was supposed to be less expensive.
And none of it could be modified to be able to still continue to utilize at least two, if not the three?
So, when I did my walkthrough of the three, I mean, it was like crumbling. I mean, as President Kamara said, I mean, it was broken, crumbling. I mean, we were, we like, we inquired with Stark if we could, you know, even just like repurpose them, like, just kind of resurface, which was not an option. So, that we sort of just pivoted because it just, I mean, it's hard squeezing 700,000 out of you guys for one. I mean, I can't imagine if I came in here with asking for over 2 million. And, and that did seem, like, I mean, that just seemed ridiculous to us as well, that that, that was too much money for maybe something that wasn't going to be used, you know, in three different locations by as many people. So, I don't think, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, it does. And I guess my last question would be, when you read this, in one part, in one sentence, it states rehab, and the next sentence, it states creates, we're creating a park. Is it a combination? Is it a rehab? Is it a tear-out and we're actually rebuilding?
So, I think it's. Yeah, so I think we're, we're rehabbing it in the sense of, we're, we're creating a new place. Like, we're rehab, we're making this a better, this existing space a better, a better park. But I think they're going to have to, my, my guess, this is a guess, but they're going to have to rip that out. I mean, it's just, I don't know that, I don't know that you could ever do anything. I think we're kind of starting from scratch. Putting down new cement, putting down new equipment, redesigning it, all of that.
All righty, well, like I say, I feel bad that apparently it wasn't properly maintained to be, end up in, in the condition it's in. I don't have faith moving forward, but thank you, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat seven, Counselor, seat eight, Counselor Sampson.
Thank you. So I submitted this proposal for all the reasons stated above. When we learned that we were not going to be able to pay for the public safety police cars and all of that, my fear was that we were going to lose a project on the other end that was very important, and this being probably not on the tier of importance for that. And I am going to speak for the skaters and the kids, as far as diversity and inclusion, is because we always, I feel, are looking at baseball fields, softball fields, basketball fields. And our skate parks, I am a mother of a son who rode skateboards forever and ever. And I'll tell you, skateboarding is ve, really big right now. I was just in New Bedford, not far from my office, a brand-new skate shop was opened up. It's a huge thing right now, and unfortunately, we have let the skate parks go in Fall River. It's a shame the, what the skate parks look like, and I would like to fix all three of them because it is true, there is skaters in Fall River, but they don't get a voice. They really, really don't. And they are last because they're not your popular basketball player, your baseball player, pickleball. I don't think we did a service to see how many people want to play pickleball, but we wanted to do a survey to see how many kids skateboard? They're there, it's a huge popular sport right now, but Fall River has done an injustice to our young kids. So I feel like we're going to take off the table now because we got to move some money around there. Our young kids are going to lose a park, you're right. Counsel Dion, you are absolutely right, there is a, you stated, there is a long list of bad choices that were made that these parks weren't. But we have a chance to right that wrong right here for these young people, and at least have the opportunity to fix one of the parks so they can skate. And maybe they're on the other side of the city, but these skateboarders, you can't imagine, they will skate far. They will skate to the other park, and we can at least start somewhere. And then we have the eyes to make sure that they maintain it. Like they're maintaining the park at True Park. Andrew's down there all the time, he lets us know when something's wrong. There's a new, you know, graffiti thing, there's a light out, he's always on top of that. So we can be on top of that, but we have a chance to right a wrong. And I'm afraid that these kids that are, are maybe not the, the popular ones, the basketball players, the baseball, are going to get swept under the rug. It is important to make sure that every diverse group is represented in what we are able to do here. With that youth initiative, we were looking at it today, I mean, we got kids playing ukuleles with that stuff, and we got kids throwing on boxing gloves, and we're making a movement here. So I just don't want to take something that was in the works for our young people to now be taken off. We have a, a chance here to right a wrong that's been happening. And so I just ask that we look at it like that, and take this opportunity to maybe right the wrong. And so that's why I put this in, I think it's really important. I do wish we could do all three parks, and, and they haven't been maintained, but we have a chance to fix one of them, and so with that, Council President, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat seven, Counselor Porto?
Yeah, I just, I just want to add too, in the sense of, I work with kids all day long, so I think it's important to highlight opportunities for young people. And everything that Counsel Washington mentioned is essentially a team sport. You know, I think this is an opportunity where, this is something that you can do recreationally as a kid without having to be good, bad, or indifferent. You can just do it and enjoy it. And I think that's, when you look at the diversity of giving kids an option, that's one of those things. And, and I'll just highlight again, I think it's important as we move forward, when we look at the parks plans and what have you, that it's the youth that are using these parks. It's, you know, and against, against what people believe, that kids don't get outside and sit in front of the computers all day long. That's not, that's not necessarily true. A lot of kids who spend a lot of time outside during the summer, we all see it, driving through the city of people at the basketball courts and whatever. But I think this is an opportunity too, that you give an opportunity to a kid who doesn't necessarily play a team sport, maybe they're just to themselves, and they want something that they can work at without anybody getting on their head about it, and just be successful and enjoy it. And it's not something we have a lot of currently. And I agree with you, with your point about the popularity of it. I think there is a niche for it, there is an interest, and, like they say with baseball fields, you build it, they will come. So I think it's, it's a good idea to give these kids another option. We need to give our kids more options. We don't have enough, unfortunately, so, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Nope.
No questions? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you, Kara.
Do we have a motion, Mr. President?
Yep.
We did have a motion.
Motion to approve?
And it was a second.
Okay.
Motion to, that's why we had discussion, it was a motion to approve, and it was second. In favor?
I.
I'm sorry, Counsel Kill, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just one quick comment, popped into my head. Being, being an elected official for many years, as you have, Mr. President, and Counsel Hart and others, Counsel Prer, I just, just reminded of the fact that, that, let's not forget, this is a good thing. This is a good thing for children, okay? As Ms. Counsel proposal stated. And I, in the past, I found that really, nothing gets done if you listen to the argument, well, we're doing that, we need this, or we need this, or we can't do that because we need this, this, and this. Nothing gets done. So, we're doing this. And, am I making sense? Nothing gets done if you look at the entire picture and all the needs. We're focusing on one thing. And I think it's a good thing, and I'll be supporting it, so. I hope I made sense what I just said, but that, that memory just hit me that, if you think about the whole picture, it doesn't get done. If you have, if you have a home, you need a, you know, you want a nice swimming pool, you want a nice deck, but you need a roof. You don't do the swi, I mean, it's just, I think we're going to focus more on doing one part, one, focus on the positive of one project, so. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, you said this is for the kids, are you saying people like me can't use this skate park?
I never went to a skate park in my life, I probably wouldn't have a neck right now, so.
Thank you. Counselor, seat one, Counselor, good deal.
No, I guess I just, along those lines, listen, I, I respect the fact that it's, you know, for the children and not just the children, for the community, because I don't, I don't think skating has an age, or, you know, Counsel, Counselor in seat seven mentioned Tony Hawk, I mean, he's a, he's 40, 50, I don't know how old he is.
He's got a lot of money too.
And he's got a lot of money, right? So there's no limit into the age. You know, what I'm saying, and I'm going to be voting no, because I just, from my standpoint, we've, we've been talking about this, and it's, it's not just this issue, right? There's a number of issues that we've talked about in terms of having a strategic plan, right? And we've talked about a master plan for our recreational parks and recs. And part of that, and it's not just a survey, because I understand, you know, what Counselor seat eight is, is saying, and I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we needed a survey, but it's just, what, you know, at some point, we need to know what, what the plan is, and part of that plan needs to be input from the community and residents, saying that this is what they want to see in terms of their parks and the recreational components that they want to, you know, see in our neighborhoods. And, and part of that is just making Fall River a better place to live. But part, part of that discussion is, is talking about, you know, the demand and the need. You know, Counselor seat eight put that great initiative with the, with the money for youth services that you mentioned about, you know, folks, you know, kids having the opportunity to go to learn instruments, you know, go to boxing. We just had the, you know, the softball league that's, that's taking place now at Dumont Field. I mean, you drive by, you know, 24, and you see, you see those three baseball fields being utilized, that softball fields. It's, it's an amazing situation. And I guess that's where I was going, and that's why I'm, I'm voting against this right now, is because I, I just want to make sure that we've got this opportunity with 700,000, whatever that is, for whatever group we're talking about, and I want to be as inclusive as possible. I just want to know that this is the right thing to do, in terms of, you know, okay, so we've got, we've got three skate parks, are we going to, you know, abandon the other two, two parks? And, and Counsel Dion isn't wrong when we talked about it. I've been hopping on this, this conversation every budget year, when we start talking about and breaking down the expenses and dividing it by the number of parks, it's less than $1,000, $2,000 per park, you can't do anything with that. And we keep saying that it's our opportunity to fund it. We don't build budgets, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, the administration come down and, and put millions and millions of dollars into the park department, because I understand there are other needs that go into the, to the budget, and we have limited revenue and resources for that. But at the same, same point, it's, it's been over 10 years that we've, we've been talking about increasing, you know, the park department, coming up with a master plan, trying to get the, you know, park commission to come before us and really kind of have a more thorough discussion, you know, a partnership, a joint conversation about what they want to see the parks and the type of improvements that have taken place. So, so that's all where I'm going, and I, and I, and I don't disagree that the initiatives that have been put forth by, you know, individual members and the administration for the use of the ARPA money for recreational opportunities for our youth in particular, as well as our residents, is amazing. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not putting something in that's not going to be used, that that's the only thing. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat five, Counselor Vice President, Pror.
I really, I really wasn't going to speak on this, because I'm in favor of fixing that skate park, because I do live in the Flint, and I see numbers of kids there using it. And you're right, it gets worn out by people using it. If nobody was using it, we wouldn't need to repair it because it wouldn't be worn out. But I think what we have here tonight is two issues. One, Attorney Hum is here basically to talk about ARPA funding for this one project. I agree with Counsel Dion wishing that the two other skate parks in the city were also fixed, but we don't have the money to repair that. And when we look at money, I think what we need to do is, what my colleague in seat number one has been saying for a while, we need to look at what we're doing with the parks. So I would suggest that the Health and Human Service Committee, Health and Youth, that you get together with the park department, because I'll give you an example. Park Department, because I'll give you an example, Diamond is now being built, they cannot use their baseball field, so they are using a field, and I don't know if it's Somerset or Swansea-
Swansea.
-to the tune of thirty thousand dollars, when Lafayette Park is within walking distance to Diamond, and why they didn't use that field and pay us, there'd be thirty thousand dollars, or maybe twenty thousand, 'cause we gotta take care of the field, for them, but that would be money that we get, you know, we need to look at the grand picture of, many people want soccer fields, we don't have enough soccer fields, but people will pay to use soccer fields, that will give money to the Park Department to do the repairs. It's not just taking tax money out of taxpayers in the city, but it's looking at ways to generate revenue. I mean, I say it all the time, softball, those leagues go all over the place, Brian Bishop, one of our best electrical partners in the city, he travels all over, why can't we get people to come here? And that would be tourism and economic development for us, they'd eat at our restaurants, they'd stay overnight, so I think maybe having a meeting with the Park Department, we have some new members tonight going on, or a new member going on the park board, maybe they can look at that, what do we do, and how much is it gonna cost that we can put in, even if it's oppo money to put in, to get the ball rolling on changing some of these parks, that then they can be utilized, and people will pay to use them. Now you have your money to do the repairs, but I just figured, I was one of the few that didn't say anything, I had to just chime in on that, so, I thank you so much for listening, and with that, I yield. Thank you.
Councilor C. Hart?
Yeah, just real quick, Mr. President, thank you, um, I, I do, I get both sides here, um, but I am going to support it, because I remember back when I think Councilor, uh, President Kamara and I first got elected to the, uh, City Council, we met with a lot of neighbors and the children, uh, they wanted a skateboard park, and we put, put it in the north, the north end, the North Park, and that was, I think, maybe one of the first ones, so it was popular then, and it's, it's more than popular now, so, I do understand that, um, that it's, it's like a niche sport, but it's a very popular one, and I think by doing this and repairing, making the repairs at Lafayette, it's just going to, I think, increase, uh-
Usage.
You know, the usage there, so, I think it's all, it's, it's a good one, uh, for all of us here to vote yes on, I understand people not voting, uh, voting no on it, because of, I do think that we, we do not, uh, you know, maintain properly, uh, but that's, might be other reasons with our money, not having budget, budgeted well, and not having the money to budget it, but, um, I think this is a good idea to do, I think we should, uh, definitely support it, so, I yield.
Thank you, Council. I, yes, I knew that, Councilor C. Eight, Seven, Councilor Porteau?
Of course, um, and I think it's important to highlight, when you look at the Capitol, Park Capital Improvement Report, Lafayette Park among the list is one of those parks that has the highest priority rating improvements that are needed, and I think, you know, when you look at a lot of the par- a lot of the parks have had improvements, where Lafayette hasn't had so many improvements, and if you look at the photo from that document of the current skate park, I mean, and this was 2016, um, it's not much of a skate park, it's a few ramps and kinda beat up, so, I mean, I, again, I'm gonna advocate for the fact that it's a good opportunity to give more opportunity to our kids, that's all, thank you, I yield.
There you go, Council. Motion has been made.
And it was seconded.
And seconded, to approve?
To approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Seat one and seat two opposed.
Item seven is the mayor's request for a proposed ordinance, um, to amend permit fees for the engineering department.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Seconded.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is the mayor's request for an ordinance, um, that would amend the minimum house, the organizational structure that relates to minimum housing.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Second.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is the mayor's request to transfer three parcels of vacant land, um, that are currently held as tax possessions, to the Tupper Water Board.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. On the motion, Councilor C. Five, Councilor Vice President?
I have a question on what size lots these parcels are, are they buildable lots, are they not buildable lots? The water department is, you know, in that area, they wanna protect the watershed area, I get it, but they've got a lot of parcels that I think that they could sell, and I don't feel like I wanna give them more unless I know a little bit more about this, and-
To refer to the real estate committee, Councilor, if you feel-
Pardon?
Can make a recommendation, refer to the real estate committee.
Yes, I'd make a motion to refer to real estate.
We have a mea- uh, we have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-eighth, I'll make sure it's on there.
Motion to refer to committee on real estate has been made, has it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten is the mayor's request, um, for the approval of a tie agreement for Invagen Pharmaceuticals and Madison F.R. Properties.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
To adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Opposed.
Seat two opposed.
Item eleven A is the financial order that the sum of one hundred eighty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-four cents be in the same as hereby transferred to capital project fund from FY twenty-three surplus revenue.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second financial order that the sum of six hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents be in the same as hereby transferred to OPEB Fund from fiscal year two, twenty-twenty-three surplus revenue.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the third order, that the sum of one hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to sewer fiscal year twenty-twenty-four operational budget from the sewer stabilization fund to cover prior year deficit.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve is the mayor's request to adopt a quitclaim deed conveying assessor's lot I six dash twenty-two, it's, this is a vacant lot at the corner of Columbia and Canal Streets.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made-
Seconded.
And seconded, on the-
And I would send a letter to the bishop, thanking him for the gift.
Mo- on the motion, Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Porteau?
Mr. President, I'm just gonna abstain from this vote, simply 'cause I work for the diocese, so I'm gonna abstain from the vote, thank you.
No problem, Council. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention, one abstention, Councilor Seat Seven.
Item thirteen is an order from the mayor, um, requesting approval of a ten-year contract for the operation, maintenance, and management of the wastewater treatment facilities and collection system.
Motion to return to fin- refer to finance.
Second.
Motion to refer to committee on finance has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the Traffic Commission making recommendations to the ordinances?
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance.
Seconded.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs at a meeting held on April twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw, this relates to the Stonehaven Road neighborhood.
Motion so made. Second.
Motion, motion grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, can I just, a quick question on, um, item thirteen, I know we referred it, could I just request through you to the, uh, city clerk, can we just get verification from Cooperation Council? So it says that the request is for an approval of a ten-year contract, and I know I'm just mincing words, but is it, I think the legislative body is only authorizing the mayor to sign a ten-year contract, I don't think we authorize the contract, can we just, can we just confirm that? 'Cause I mean, there's a little bit of a difference, 'cause I know it's getting sent to, to Finance Committee, if we're not approving the contract, uh, you know, I, I think it limits our line of questioning in terms of what appears in that contract, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Madam Clerk, number fourteen, we did fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Sixteen. The Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs at a meeting held on April twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw, this relates to geothermal energy.
Motion, grant leave to withdraw.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted pending the presentation of the city collector's receipt of payment to the city clerk. Um, I can tell the council that this afternoon, uh, probably about four PM, the treasurer did advise that, um, the gentleman was in, made payment, and also a payment.
Very good.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted pending presentation of the city collector's receipt of payment to the city clerk, this is the same Mr. Sanchez on Shapman Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted as amended, this is in Auto Repair Shop, um, at one eighty-two Stafford Road.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes as amended.
Committee on Public Safety at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilor Dion absent and not voting, this, uh, resolution related to the fire station building capital plan.
Motion grant leave to withdraw.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Public Safety at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilor Dion absent and not voting, this resolution related to a fire hydrant testing.
Motion grant leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Public Safety at a meeting held on April twenty-ninth voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw with Councilor Dion absent and not voting, this resolution related to smoke and carbon monoxide detectors.
Motion grant leave to withdraw.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Seat five opposed.
I just think that people have a right to know that smoke detectors now have to have carbon monoxide, and they have to have, um, voice activated as well, and if people don't know this, and then when they go to sell a home, there's a big problem with them having to do that, so there's gotta be some way for the fire department to let people know that, and I thought putting in this resolution would do that, but I guess it was rent leave to withdraw, so, with that, I yield.
There you go, Council, seat three, do you have a question?
Yeah, just real quickly, um, they actually do do that, they are, um, when the, when the fire department does go in there, after, when they sell every home, and make sure that all those-
Right, but they only do that when they sell a home, there's been no public announcement made to people that now this is what the state requires, so you don't know until you go to sell a home, and we have a lot of multifamilies, you know, in the city, that if they're voice activated and people could buy them now, when you go to replace one, you would at least replace it with what the state requires now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty-
I've had some people call about that.
I'll move on, but I'm pretty sure that, um, that, that, that it was covered there at the meeting, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was, I'll, and I'll go back, maybe, tomorrow with Lauren on the minutes and, and just read it and, and get back to you, Council.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
And just add, it's, um, it's not within the purview of the fire department, it's the building department, so, that's one of the reasons we gave it leave to withdraw, because it's the, believe it or not, 'cause I thought it was the fire department as well, and I must say, the chief, the new chief did a wonderful job at that meeting, and, um, it's within the purview of the building department, so that's, again, the language that fire, and it's not fire.
But also, but I'll follow up with you, Council, about that, I'll give the minutes, and I'll also, also even get to the building as well to talk to them.
Thank you, and I think Chief Bacon is doing an awesome job, I-
Yeah, he is.
I've done a great job working with them.
Very, very good.
Thank you.
So, motion, motion to give leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll go with him.
Have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to make second reading and enrollment?
Motion is made and seconded.
Second.
Motion second, has been made to pass for second reading and enrollment, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
To adopt, police chief report has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have an application for the renewal of an auto body shop license at thirty-nine eleventh Street.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 27 is a request for the transfer of an auto repair shop license located at 753 Pleasant Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have an application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license located at 1904 Bay Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
To adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 29 is in order requesting that the city engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Draper Street from Globe Mills Avenue to Atlantic Boulevard.
Motion for the planning board.
Motion for the planning board has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion for Corporation Council.
Motion for Corporation Council has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 31 is a request on behalf of Steppingstone, um, to place a banner at between 111 and 134 Durfus Street. Motion to approve?
Second.
To approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 32 is a request on behalf of the Fall River Masonic Associates Incorporated for placement of a reflective road signs on Columbus Drive and Meridian Street.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
To approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 33 is the city engineer's request for a street opening on a street less than five years, uh, at Pine and Purchase Streets.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of drain layers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the drain layer licenses has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thirty-five A and B are minutes of the planning board from February 14th and March 13th.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept, the minutes and place on file has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take thirty-six and thirty-seven together.
Motion to take thirty-six and thirty-seven have been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries.
No.
On item thirty-six and thirty-seven, is there a motion?
Motion to approve both.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can you just read on it, thirty-six and thirty-seven?
We have minutes of the Committee on Finance held on April 23rd in the regular meeting of the City Council held on April 23rd.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a recess. Traffic department's side.
Just, just for an educational...
City Council recessed for two minutes.
I'm sorry.
Office.
Just for an educational point, so you don't take a motion.
Madam Clerk?
We have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through its final ordination.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion passed through ordination has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 14th voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion so made. Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 14th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the zoning map amendment.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass through first reading.
I don't know how to shut that off.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, in the middle. Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 14th voted unanimously to recommend...
Counselors, we're still in the meeting. Can you put that down, please? We're still taking votes.
Yes, you should have to be a question, but it's okay.
We're almost done. Take care after the meeting, please. Thank you, appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on May 14th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave-to-withdraw. This relates to commercial vehicle parking.
Motion so made. Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Good night, everybody. Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I feel like I'm back from middle school, Councilor.
Motion carries. Good job, everybody. Good night.
Good night.